Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for our school business meeting on Monday, June 15th, 2020. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
Ms. Balding?
Here.
Mr. Redden?
Here.
And Mr. Colas Absinthe.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Could we please stand and look at Bruce's screen for the flag behind him? And we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the public.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We're gonna jump through the consent agenda because I know that Mike Leitman has another appointment. So we do have warrants. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $240,356.60 approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? I move that the following named bills in the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $5,701.98 approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? I move the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $971.50 approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I would remind school committee members that we do need four signatures on these warrants, and they are laid out at the district office. We have a set of minutes from our June 1st, 2020 meeting. Do we have moved? Anybody want to move the minutes?
Some moved.
Second? Are there any changes, additions?
Go.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Sean, I'm gonna turn over the next introduction of Michael to you or Angela.
Yeah, great. And then Angela, you can fill in, but you know, we're very proud to be working with Michael Leitman. Michael's already worked within the district a few years ago. And working with an extended leadership team along with the staff around cultural competency. I provided an overview of what Michael's all about, some of the work that he's done in his work experience. But I know Mike is working with another district right after this, but I just really wanted Michael to introduce himself and just kind of talk about the thought process that we had as we're gonna be moving forward, working with Michael throughout next year. Are you out there, Mike?
He's muted, Sean.
Oh, he is? Uh, we'll get you, Mike. Any other co-hosts? If you see him, you can unmute him. There he is. All right, I think we're good.
Still muted.
I think we're all clicking on him. I am not clicking.
Okay, I'll click.
I just see an asked, "Ask him to unmute himself" command.
Yeah.
It was there a second ago. Oh.
Yeah, I heard him a minute ago.
All right.
Can you do it, Michael?
He can't. But I'm gonna unmute him. No one else unmute Mike.
Hello.
All right. Hey! We got a lot of work to do just on the unmuting.
Oh, nice. It's, Sean, it's always good to be, there's a special place in my heart for Newburyport. My wife and I moved to Massachusetts six years ago, and I think one of the first places that I came to visit was Newburyport because two close friends live here. And as I've been doing the work that I'm involved in over the past almost 18 years, I really appreciate having partnerships with folks that want to do business and mean business. So when I, Angela, she texts me, and we've worked together before, and when she texts me, I was like, okay, this is Angela. So when Angela texts you, you respond to her because she's pretty efficient. And then I started to talk with Sean, and I was just so warm that as we have a new superintendent, that he is moving in the same vein that the district is moving. And so sometimes when you have new leaders, the trajectory is completely different. And so I was so excited to see that his leadership was wanting to keep moving the school forward. So I'm glad to be on with you all this evening, and I have to say, I don't think I've said the Pledge of Allegiance virtually, and so that was really cool to be a part of that, just to, I wasn't sure, should I stand up? I said, yeah, heck yeah, I want to stand up to do that. So just quickly, I'm really impassioned about foundations, and in this heightened time of racial strife, conflict, stressors for certainly black folks, black and brown folks, but also I think larger white communities are trying to figure out how do we do, how do we serve our constituents well? I think that the Newburyport school system is poised to do that, and I just want to make sure that I acknowledge Mayor Holliday. I saw you speak a few times, and I was just, again, thinking about leadership, a lot of times there are people who enroll, and then there are people who are leading. So I really appreciate the kind of work that you all are doing. So really quickly, my, the work that I do is based on foundations, and I call it cultural competence. I think a lot of times we like to do programs. How many of you have seen amazing programs just by raising your hand in your time, diversity programs? Anybody else? Okay, I got one person. Deb, two, okay, three people. Okay, if the mayor's with me, I'm fine. The problem is, when you have programs, if the person leaves, if the person gets tired, then you have to start all over. And so what we're hoping to do is to utilize a foundation where you have a cultural competence framework that looks at these, a few different areas. One of them is awareness, attitude, knowledge, skills, and practices. Everything that I do is really founded on that, and it's some of the work that I did with the leadership team in previous times. And so I had a chance to look at the letter that the alum sent to the superintendent, and I think that part of our goal is always to not just be reactive. And I think in a time of heightened racial awareness around conflict, we have to be, we have to hold each other accountable, but also not rush to, let's try to fix it. And I think when we try to do that, we can create challenges. So my hope after talking with Angela and Sean the other day was to put together a strategy plan around foundations that would connect with what the school is already doing. And I felt excited because the work that you all are doing is, I remember working with the school system a couple of years ago, and you can tell that there's continued growth, and that's also very exciting because a lot of times when you have growth start, then it just completely stops. So my work is really about finding out where you all are and to figure out where the work needs to happen first. I always believe, so my concept is, so goes leadership, so goes everything else. And so to talk to the school committee is critical because you have a pulse, I would call you all the guardians of the school system. Whether everyone believes that or not, you have a guardian's heart, and how do we make sure that you all are having a chance to engage in conversations around equity and inclusion? So when you go out, even when someone's pushing on you, like the letter said, you know, I haven't gotten any of this in my, from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. If that is true, then we can frame a conversation to not be defensive and to say, here's what we've done, and we want to do more. So that's a little bit about what I'm interested in. Sean, help guide me because I want to make sure I'm giving, I know you said you just wanted me to do an introduction.
Yeah, I think, you know, and I think the school committee will feel the same way after talking with you or listening to you, you know, you get everyone motivated, you know, we want to jump in, jump into this work. But what I really like, Mike, and exactly, you know, what we're gonna do, we're gonna build upon, I think, a lot of the work that we've done with the ADL, the Essential Partners, yourself, to really, as you said, it doesn't matter who comes in and out as a superintendent, the foundational piece is, will end up becoming part of our culture here in Newburyport. So that's the goal regardless of a new leader coming in. It's really the groundwork that we're excited to work with you on, so I'm much to.
And Sean, I'm looking at two things that I have, I have to share this with you all just before I hop off. I'm actually teaching, I work with an organization called Six Seconds, and actually some of the school committee, if you, if you've been around for the last, I don't know, five or six years, we did, we asked some of the school committee to help with some of the leadership vital signs, if you remember, or the team vital signs, some of you may have offered feedback for others, but we're doing something called Growing University, Six Seconds, and so I'm doing a session on emotional intelligence and cultural awareness in about 15 minutes. So I need to gather my thoughts, but I just want to share this one slide with you all. It says I can't share my screen.
Oh.
Is it possible to do that?
Yeah, hold on one sec.
And so the one slide that I want to show you is something that, for me, has been great for starting points. Don't judge my email. I know all of you all have, you know, only one email in your inbox. Okay, maybe a few people have more than one. This one slide is a foundational piece. So can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yep, so the five components, so for me, I have some friends who do phenomenal work around critical race theory, around reconciliation, and I love those pieces, and I realize that if I don't have a foundation point, it's hard for me to lift off. And so if you look at these awareness, attitude, knowledge, skills, and practices, I'll give you the quick Cliff Notes, and then I'll let you all finish the business of governing Newburyport. So the awareness piece is, what do I need to, what do I, what do I notice about the situation? What's happening with, for example, this student that sent in the letter? Because the awareness piece is really, really important. The piece that we don't pay a lot of attention to is this attitude. I bet as leaders, many of you have heard, leave your emotions at the door. Anybody else heard that besides me? Okay, it's me. Maybe me and Angela. The problem is, attitude, when you're mad and you don't say it, it still comes out. It just comes out in a different form. So we want to look at awareness and attitude. How do we, as the school committee, feel about that letter? Somebody might, and I know we're recording, so I'll keep kind words, but let's say someone is like really hot because I can't believe this person sent that. We need to acknowledge that. Someone else might say, you know, that student was just right. We need to acknowledge that. We need to acknowledge different perspectives, and that's the attitude which pops, that's really looking at our cultural perspective, so our attitudes, our values, and our beliefs. The third domain quickly looks at, what do we actually know? Like, what do we know about that student? What do we know about that student's growth? What do we know about that student's family? Not to try to shed a negative light on that student, but to get some awareness so we're not just being reactionary. Everybody with me still?
Yeah.
I don't see anybody snoring, so I'm okay. The difference between the knowledge, what you read in a book, and what you can actually do is very different. I don't know if you've ever been in a situation where you've had to read something, and then whoever's the leader says, well, can you lead us in that now? And you're like, the knowledge has not transferred into the skill area. So part of what we want to do with everyone, particularly the head leaders first, is to say, what knowledge do we have? And how do we practice? There's a lot of practice that needs to happen around racial dialogue and conflict. When someone comes at you and they're really angry, if you're from a kind of a feisty background, you may be ready to fight right away. That's one tool, but the other tool might be to say, I see that you're really angry, and I'll use Angela, Angela, I see you're really angry with me right now because I did ABC. Acknowledging that goes from knowledge to skill. And so the last part, without me getting all excited, and Sean, you're getting me excited already, is the practices piece. What do each of us need to do to increase our knowledge? Because if we're saying, well, the school committee needs to go for certain types of training, not just around diversity, but around emotional intelligence or conflict engagement, it keeps building this toolkit. So when we go to serve students, we now have, we're on similar bearings as opposed to just looking to students to lead us. So this is a framework that I use, and I'm excited to continue using that with the group.
Awesome.
Okay.
Michael, thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, Sean, we should loop back probably in the next.
Absolutely. And good luck in your conference.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, if it doesn't, if it doesn't go well, I'll just say.
Yeah, Blaine Gallagher.
Okay, Brucey Bruce. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mike.
It's a start.
Yeah, we're, as I said, you know, we're really excited to have Mike, and it's not, you know, come in for one leadership meeting. This is gonna be a partnership throughout the, throughout the school year. So I just really believe, it's just really gonna help us enhance a lot of the stuff that we've already have done in the sense of, as I said, the work we did with the ADL that we're gonna continue, the Essential Partners, and, you know, all the other, I think, aspects that we have in that document that I sent out. And I think Mike will also help, you know, bring, I just think, bring the, you know, cultural competency to us and give us strategies on how to make things better for everybody. So I think we're just really excited to have him, so.
Sean, in addition to, in addition to working with staff and working with students, Michael will also be consulting with us as well if issues come up.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Angela, did you want to fill anything else in?
I did. I just wanted, I just wanted to add that, you know, Michael has a really varied background, which is nice, because I think he can take all of those pieces and put it together in helping coach us and facilitate the kind of dialogues that we need. I mean, he's worked on, you know.
Superintendent Gallagher?
Yeah.
I can't hear a thing that's being said.
Okay.
Good thing we're recording it.
Yes. Can you hear us now, Judy?
I'll write a chat to her.
Yeah. I'll, Angela, finish up your thoughts. I think Joanne's still here. She can reach out to Ms. Kennedy.
All right. I just wanted to just, just share a couple of things that he's done so that, you know, you'd have a better understanding of, he's modest, and he didn't go into half of these things. But he's developed a framework for cross-culture alliances. He talked about the emotional intelligence work he's done. He's designed, developed, and implemented organizational inclusion assessments. He facilitates workshops on the cultural competency for not only faculty and staff, but student leaders, parents, and community groups. He is a facilitator of race dialogue conversations. He has developed, he provides coaching and developing strategies to make curriculum more inclusive of diverse perspectives, and he works with executive teams on diversity strategies. So, you know, he's just, I feel like he's had so much experience in so many different aspects of building cultural competency, and I think we're lucky to have him, and those things will just weave into his work with us.
Great. Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
I don't know if Sean has made it back into the room yet. I was gonna ask him to introduce Peter.
It built into my computer, and I was hearing everything, but all of a sudden, the volume.
All right, go ahead, Bruce.
Sean, why don't you introduce the Newburyport High School?
Bruce, can I just say one thing before we move on? I just really, really appreciate, Sean, Angela, this document that you put together. I mean, I think we all are aware of a lot of these programs.
Well, I'll just look at it.
But to have put them all together in this multi-page document, really highlighting, you know, it's pretty impressive work when you go back and look at all of the programs and initiatives that have been implemented in the district over the years. So I really wanted to thank you for that document. I think it's really, really helpful at this time as we begin to move forward, and I'm thrilled that you're bringing Michael back. I just wanted to add that. Thank you very much.
Yes. I think, you know, for us as a school community mayor, I agree 100%. I think our foundation has been, it's there for us to go to the next level. And now bringing Michael in, just really gonna enhance a lot of the work.
Well, I just unmuted myself.
So. I, all right.
Good. So we have our Newburyport High School Student Representative.
Yes, and this is.
For his last meeting?
His last meeting. And Peter, you're out there. We have to unmute Pete.
So we're gonna recognize him before he gives a report?
I think so, you know?
All right.
That way, once he gets his recognition, if he wants to throw the superintendent under the bus, there's no recourse.
He's unmuted, Sean.
He is. Peter, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to, on behalf of the school committee and all of us, you have this beautiful certificate from the superintendent and the Newburyport Public Schools for all of your service. I know at one school committee, when the raises went through, you thought you were getting that raise, but unfortunately, you got a certificate, all right? But when you come back to Newburyport, very successful resident, you can run for school committee, and hopefully I'll still be here, and then, you know, we can work together. But all kidding aside, Peter, we're just, you know, you've done only just on school committee, but your high school career and all the work you've done at the high school, really being a leader, stepping up on many occasions, being part of those initiatives that we sent out, you know, with the ADL, the Essential Partners, and all of that, we're just really thrilled to have you, and we're excited for your last report. And I think it's really gonna be around a lot of the senior celebrations that you were part of.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Gallagher, and the school committee for the award. It's greatly appreciated. So as Mr. Gallagher mentioned, my name is Peter D'Ambrosio, and I am the student representative to the Newport School Committee. And today, I will be providing you all with a brief overview of the senior events that the high school has had in the past couple of weeks. So the events kicked off on May 22nd with a laundry, laundry sign delivery, which Mr. Gallagher and the mayor both participated in with, along with countless teachers, and that was really a great experience for all the students. It was fun getting to see some teachers for the last time. Then on May 27th, we had a scholarship awards ceremony, which aired on the local station, and over $400,000 was provided to students, which is quite remarkable. And on behalf of all the seniors, I would like to thank every individual and organization that participated for their amazing generosity and continued support. On July 3rd, we had cap and gown pickup day, which was aired, which was really fun. It was a great experience. And later that night, Vesper ceremony was aired on the local station. And the following day, June 4th, we had Ivy Day ceremony, which was also aired on the local station. And then just a quick shout out to Port Media for doing a great job on airing that. It was great to have a little bit more of the traditional senior stuff in the mix. And finally, on June 7th, we had a senior car parade and diploma distribution by the mayor, Mr. Gallagher, and later that day, a senior slideshow and single video, which the historians did a wonderful job doing. And then finally, on behalf of all the seniors at the high school, I would like to thank Mayor Holliday and Mr. Gallagher for distributing diplomas at the car parade, and for Port Media for doing such a wonderful job. We really do appreciate all of your work. And then, as Mr. Gallagher did mention briefly, this is my last meeting as a student representative, and I would really just like to thank all of you for this awesome experience. I've had a lot of fun attending the meetings over the past couple of years. I'm truly thankful for all of you, especially Mr. Wolf, for making this entire experience possible. So thank you so much, and I hope that you all are healthy and safe. Thank you.
Peter, thank you very much. You've really added a lot to our meetings, and you have represented the students and the school and the district very, very well. I'm really, really pleased and wish you best of luck going forward with wherever it is you're going. All righty. Peter, where are you headed to in the fall?
I'll be attending Babson College this fall.
Oh, congrats. That's awesome. Great. Thank you very much. So we've done the student recognition. Sean?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Good. The next item on, the next item on the agenda is to, in light of the petition that we got, and in light of your staff pulling together the information about what we've been doing, say, over the last 18 months, we wanted to give the school committee an opportunity to talk about some of those things, to ask some questions, to help begin to shape the direction that we're going in. So I just, I just sort of want to open it up, but, you know, you can, you or Angela can sort of give us a brief introduction to the, to the document. You know, there are people who are here from the community who may or may not have seen it, even though it's been posted. So if you want to just sort of briefly summarize you and Angela, then we can take off from there. And then we will have a period of public comment after that conversation to get feedback from the community and to try to gather some questions.
Right. All right. That's great. And then Assistant Superintendent Beck, you can fill in after. If I miss anything, I'm not gonna go through the 10-page document, but I just wanted also, before we get to a lot of the work on the cultural competency initiatives in the district, I also wanted to also make the community aware of a lot of the work in partnership that we have for our local agencies and police agencies to kind of, I think, dismiss some of the, you know, the myths that are out there. You know, first of all, and I think under the leadership of District Attorney Blodgett, for years on, in Essex County, the schools partner with the District Attorney's Office. We have monthly, it's called CCI meetings, which is a community collaborative initiative, and that's made up of school administration, school resource officer, district attorney representatives, usually like an assistant district attorney, Department of Children and Families, school counselors, and other mental health professionals that are invited to those meetings. So we really look at sharing and working together, sharing resources. And then the other important aspect is talk about local and state trends that may have an impact on not only the community, but our students and families. So a lot of the resources that we share together is resources on dating and domestic violence, underage drinking, substance abuse, mental health resources is anxiety, depression. As we all know, the opioid abuse that's happening, looking at those trends and providing resources, social media issues on harassment, bullying, physical and sexual abuse of, you know, children, and then a new category, that Newburyport, I think, in the indigmont, about a lot of our elders, a lot of our grandparents that are raising children today and providing them resources. So all of those agencies come together and really work together and share resources. In addition to those meetings, we also have our adjustment counselors attend those, and then there's a lot of follow-up with students and families, individual students and families, that we can provide support for. And I think that's really important for the community to understand. The school resource officers and the police and our emergency personnel, fire, EMTs, really, it's a partnership where we all, you know, work together. And I just also wanted to mention our NEMLEC, which is the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. So they're a really big part of the schools throughout Essex County, and it's really, they coordinate a partnership of the agencies in the same idea, a school region, knowledge, resources, and really benefit of public safety. So that NEMLEC team really works only in the public safety aspect, but also within the schools. And I can give you a couple scenarios. In Marshall Murray and the Newburyport Police Department, when we had the unfortunate. Um, when we had the, uh, the unfortunate, um, tragedy of a student taking their own life, uh, six months ago, uh, Marshal Murray at eleven o'clock called me, uh, notified me of this, uh, um, tragedy and by six o'clock in the morning, uh, NEMLEC assembled at Newburyport High School. We had over, uh, thirty professionals there, um, representing, uh, all aspects of state agencies, including, uh, law enforcement. Um, really, the, uh, NEMLEC can send, uh, crisis and crisis management team out to every school within a heartbeat. The, um, other aspect, if we recall, um, in Marshal Murray and, and our agencies, there was a round, we recall in the summertime at, at the football field, there was a round that was found by a pedestrian walking the field and I got a call at eight thirty of that. And by ten o'clock, um, in the morning, within an hour after the call, and I reported to Marshal Murray, we had the NEMLEC team, public safety, they did, uh, search with the dogs of all, um, firearms or anything in that area, um, that could have been dangerous to any students and families. So when we, we hear a lot of, um, rhetoric throughout the country, but I really believe in Newburyport in Essex County and through the District Attorney's Office, there's been a collective effort of working with schools as resources, working with schools, uh, in a preventative manner, but really, um, our offices here, our, our, uh, you know, our mothers, our fathers, our sisters, our brothers, um, they're part of the school community. And, um, they're not here to come into the schools and, and arrest kids or to do any of that type of stuff and you know, uh, my approach as a superintendent and throughout my entire career, um, in Salem, Beverly, and now up here has really been a community approach, bringing everyone together and agencies together to assist uh, with our students and families. So that's really been a big partnership here. Um, and a partnership that obviously we're going to continue and we want to continue, um, because we've helped so many families. Um, you know, over the years that are struggling. So I kind of wanted to put that out there, uh, because, um, I can't say enough about our, uh, law enforcement agencies, our fire department, our emergency personnel, um, really, um, come to the call, uh, in, in instant and, and help us out, uh, for the resources and public safety and I can't say enough about that. So the, uh, information that, that we presented, and this was just really looking at a foundation, um, and really, as Mayor Holliday said, notifying, I think, everybody, um, kind of what we've been doing, um, within the schools and, and at the, the grassroots level um, with our students and addressing, um, you know, prejudice, bias, race, um, throughout in the schools and, and at the, the grassroots level.
Okay.
Um, with our students and addressing, um, you know, prejudice, bias, race, um, throughout the schools and, and at the grassroots. Okay. A lot of technical difficulties tonight, but, um, so going back to that, so we really broke down in three areas. Uh, educator, professional development, um, and then you can see some of those bullet points really on that first page. And then when you go through the rest of the document, it really, uh, details that, uh, but it's exploring our own bias, understanding students' diverse experiences, identities. So I'm not going to read you all of this, but you can see all of that, but then we broke it down to school culture development, um, designing appropriate and equitable focused practices, uh, for student interventions and then student programming. And then on the back summary, I kind of just gave, uh, kind of what that looks like, our professional development, our school culture and the student programming. And then behind that, you see a lot of the work, um, you know, that we've been doing. Um, but like I said, I, I really believe, um, that working with Mike and, you know, um, and taking on a lot of these, uh, topics and really working with our school community to become cultural competent. Um, I think we have the foundation, as I said, to move forward and to really enhance our practices and awareness and really work together as a entire school community and not just, you know, the schools itself. So that's my two-minute speech. Miss, uh, Miss Beck, did you have anything else you wanted to add or just take the questions as they come?
Yeah, I think we can just take the questions as they come. You did a great job with the overview there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, happy to open it up. Um, Sean, you can, you can see if there are folks that raise their hand. Uh, other questions or feedback from the school committee as to what's on the list and what isn't on the list and what some of the things were the district is thinking of doing or should be doing?
Um, I have a couple of comments. I thought this was very helpful and thank you for putting this together. I wondered if we could post this on the website. On the full website. I think it would be a great thing for people to be able to go to and see it and digest it on their own time. Um, great. And the other thing, I, I had an idea when I was reading it and wondered if, I'm sure maybe somebody else has thought of this as well, um, of bringing in the essential partners dialogue with high school students and possibly having a forum in the fall on this.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, uh, I've been going to the Human Rights Commission, uh, meetings, uh, regarding this. And part of, I think, the, the plan is to set up focus groups, you know, when we can actually bring people in person, but really have some of our essential partner-trained teachers and students kind of lead those constructive dialogues around some, you know, those tough topics, but we absolutely want to utilize our, uh, students in the essential partner work because that's what it's really geared towards.
We even, um, Sheila, we've even already talked with Michael Eaton about the work that we're doing through essential partners and seeing if there, we're going to look for opportunities for him to join some of those dialogues so that he can, um, help with that conversation.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean, do you have other hands raised there?
I don't see any and, and I think you guys, all the school community members also co-hosts, so you see people you can click on.
Uh, I mean, I think a lot of, a lot of times this boils down to, you know, boots on the ground. And I guess I would ask, you know, maybe you could just talk to, what would we say to parents or students who hear this, appreciate this? Um, but the daily experience has oftentimes turned out to be something where it doesn't translate to, um, how things feel in the classroom or how things feel in the hallways. I, I guess that's, that's it because that's, I think that's what we hear about more often than not. We don't hear like Newburyport hasn't brought in enough consultants or Newburyport doesn't have students on leadership committees during, you know, professional development days. We hear, you know, students at times in the classroom, in the hallway, interacting with faculty or peers don't feel, um, as open and accepting and as safe an environment as we want it to be for any number of reasons.
Right, well, I think that that's, I think that's our, the, the entire approach is you're changing, uh, culture, right? You're, 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 you're making it, um, I think, uh, safe and acceptable where kids come forward if they're uncomfortable or kids are able to come forward to report things. And I think, you know, as working with the ADL and also the essential partners, I think we're making that, that shift where the students are comfortable to come forward when they hear something or they feel uncomfortable and then we've been dealing with it. So I think that that's stage one of ultimately changing, you know, the, the school culture. And then I think that the big piece is where you don't have individuals making comments or making other kids come uncomfortable. But I think that that's the whole school community and the community at large approach, um, where, you know, we develop a, a safe, I think, school in the sense where kids feel comfortable and can express their thoughts, um, but also, we also need that reinforced when, when they go home and outside, you know, outside, um, you know, with their family dynamics too. So I think it's, eventually we're going to get there, but I think our approach, uh, working with Michael, working with the ADL, working with essential partners, is really working with our students and staff to really start to change those dynamics of, um, you know, where tho- those comments and people's bias, prejudice, you know, racial, uh, attitudes, um, aren't being utilized, you know, aren't being said in, in school. But I think that's the, that's the bigger picture and I think our approach here is we're developing, um, those systems and working with kids. It's not, you know, bringing in a speaker to say a, a few things. I think we're really working, as you said, Dave, on the ground level of really changing, um, uh, the, the culture, you know, and and I think we're, you know, we, we have work to do. There's no question about it, but I think we have that foundation to, to move this, uh, further.
Are there other, uh, school committee members who have thoughts or comments or ideas they want to share? Um, I did actually have one thing if there isn't anybody else. Um, I wanted to, uh, just very, very briefly, um, go back into sort of ancient history and talk about the, um, how we ended up with school resource officers. Um, a number of years ago, um, uh, the, the original youth commission in Newburyport, um, recommended very strongly, um, that the police department, the Beacon Coalition was very involved in these conversations, begin to utilize a community policing model, a, a way of working with the community as opposed to sort of being adversarial or domineering, much more community policing. And the idea of a school resource officer came out of those conversations about um, being able to, um, create relationships within the community. And I, I would say over the last ten years or so, we've, we've really seen the resource officer idea become um, what I had hoped it would be twenty-five years ago when we originally started talking about this. And that is really very much a part of the community. Um, the, the irony is, is that, you know, these school resource officers, we've had school resource officers who, um, literally were picking kids up after school and taking them to gyms to work out, to build relationships with kids who would have otherwise have dropped out. Um, you know, certainly we know, um, what the current school resource officer has done. She's been a real role model for the young women in our district and for people about how you, you know, how you deal with crisis, how you, how you can be compassionate with each other and respectful. So, so there, there's a history, um, the school resource officers were not brought in to police the schools. They were brought in to create a, a, a safe, working relationship, uh, with kids and be able to intervene with kids before they started getting into trouble. So that was the original idea and I would say that it's taken a while, but, but we are at a place now where that is how, um, that is how the school resource officers are used. That is how the police department likes to see them used, um, and they're, they're, and you and I both know and, and I know that there are a number of parents out there who know there's a lot of things that the school resource officers do that's probably not in their job description, but that they are doing on behalf of students and providing support. So, um, so I don't think people really know that history, that it actually came out of the idea of building a better school culture and not, not, uh, uh, not enhancing the ability of police to intervene within, in a school. So I did want to share that piece of it. I know the Beacon Coalition was very involved and eventually, uh, Youth Services was very involved in some of these conversations about about the evolution of that, uh, that role. Any, uh, any other school committee members, um, have anything they want to contribute at this point? Hearing none, we'll, we'll go to our session of, of public comment. It's an opportunity for, for people in the community to share, um, and to communicate with the school committee about their concerns or about the things that they, uh, appreciate that the district is doing. Um, we do ask that you identify yourself, if you can sort of raise your hand so we know to bring you into the meeting. Um, we do ask that you, um, try to keep your comments to within two minutes or so. Um, it's, it's fair to ask questions. We don't usually respond immediately, but we do, um, note those questions, uh, in, in the minutes and, uh, are making every effort to, to be responsive to them. Are there people out there in the community who have public comment they would like to make?
Bruce, Lori Burns says her hand up. I can't unmute her though. I can only ask to unmute, but B Y R N E S.
Yeah, okay. I don't, I see her, but I don't see her hand up.
Yep.
She, she has her actual hand up, not the blue hand.
Yeah, here I am, here I am, trying to be tech savvy. But Lori, uh, have you been unmuted? Not yet.
I've got a lot of.
Alright, I'm staying off it.
Alright, you want me to unmute?
Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Alright.
Oh. Didn't work, Sean.
Can Lori un-
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Lori.
I didn't realize that there's a way to raise my hand. Um, thank you. So yeah, my name is Lori Fisher Burns and I just had a quick question, uh, to Mr. Gallagher about the process that's regarding the email that we received last Tuesday night, um, for next fall, uh, the different committees that, that you're going to be forming for decisions about going back to the fall. And I didn't know if this was the correct form or when parents should have a little bit more of an idea of, uh, you know, when we should expect another email, how we could join, things of that nature.
Sean, you can feel free to respond to that.
Okay.
Cause I know that you want, you have plans for that.
Well, that's, um, actually, and it's part of my superintendent's report, so.
Okay, great.
Go ahead. You can give her, you can drop a hint though.
Okay, so basically where, um, and maybe I, we can, I can take this off the superintendent's report at the end of the meeting.
No, no.
Yeah, so, so we've outlined, um, as you saw, um, outlined the different areas of reopening schools and we compiled a lot of information over the last, I would say, three weeks, uh, working with Kathy Ricchio, who received a lot of information from the Nurses Association. We've also been working with superintendents and looking at all the different areas um, that we're going to really need to take a look at, at reopening schools. So for the parent involvement, um, we've had parents that have volunteered, um, you know, and some of them have, uh, great backgrounds in public health, um, and other parents have volunteered just to want to be on, on that. So I think as part of the task force, we're going to be selecting, um, multiple stakeholders. I think, um, we probably have around thirty that we've identified from school to the, uh, community to also parent involvement. And then in those four areas that I outlined in my, uh, email to everybody, we'll break people up into those categories. The other piece that I think is really important, um, and we're working, I think, um, after the July, uh, break, um, and then when the restrictions reduce a little bit, is having focus groups for parents, because I know there are some parents who want, uh, information, but also want to be part of the dialogue. So we're looking to set up parent focus groups at each one of the schools and each other in the grades. Um, get information from parents. We'll also bring back to the task force to develop, uh, the reopening. That, the challenging piece for us, um, is the, the commissioner sent out in the media, as you all know, uh, ran with what schools are going to look like, you know, ten kids in a class, uh, counting the adults. That was, um, and he corrected himself with the superintendents this past week. Um, that was for summer school, uh, reopening and not the fall. So he was adamant that saying the fall guidelines are not the summer school guidelines, so it's are not the summer school guidelines, so expect changes. We're expecting a draft, uh, by the end of this week, uh, for fall opening. Um, and then he wants to have his finalized draft mid-July, uh, watching the, um, you know, the health, the health data, just in case it changes. But the idea for all of us is, um, having the ability to have in-person engagement where the students are coming in, and then also a hybrid of, um, remote learning. So it's going to be kind of a blend, um, with, if things progress, let's say there's a vaccine and the public health, uh, opens where everyone can come back, we're ready to do that. But all of a sudden, if there's a second wave of the coronavirus, where we have to move everyone back to remote learning, we have the flexibility to do that also. So we're just in the beginning stages. We have not selected, um, the committee, but we also, just so you know, we're not sitting around and not thinking about all of these different challenges. Uh, Kathy Ricchio, Steve Burgholm, you know, we purchased our P P Es. Um, we've purchased, um, cleaning, a lot more cleaning products that kill viruses. We're going to start looking at developing some of those protocols, uh, but we're going to bring everyone together. My ultimate goal as superintendent is when we start in the fall that we've looked at all the different angles, that people feel comfortable on sending their children into, into the schools. That's the, the ultimate, uh, goal. But so that's kind of like a quick little synopsis, but those are our, um, ideas. And you'll be getting more information once we end school, I think on Thursday, then we're going to start really focus on reopening and then inform people in our community throughout the process on what's happening, what we're thinking, um, and go from there.
Okay, so you'll be opening it up to parents in, in different.
Different grade levels.
Different ways, yeah.
Correct. Absolutely. And then, as I said, we have a lot of people that want to help. So the people that are not selected will also run focus groups. So people can give us their concerns and then we can bring it back to the task force.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
People should, people should just get in touch with your office, just so that you, you're compiling a list of names.
Yeah, yep, people that are interested. And then if they have a, you know, a background, a professional background, they want to share grade. If they don't have a professional background and they're just concerned, that's great too. So, you know, whatever, uh, but I think it's really important for us to be, um, communicating throughout, have different forums so we can listen to the concerns, uh, because there's going to be a lot to reopening under these conditions next year.
Sean, Lori was one of the emails I had passed along to you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome.
Um, are there other, uh, is there additional public comment? Don't seem to be.
People were here earlier. I don't see them anymore though.
Should we move on to the next agenda item? Oh, hang on a second.
Oh wait, there's one.
Here is one, Kathy Weigold. Yes, Katrina Weigold. Will Weigold?
Can you hear me? Hi.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Just, um, in line with the last question, I just had sort of an add-on question. Similarly, will there be, um, an opportunity for parents to participate in any of this sort of dialogue around the remote aspect of going back to school in the fall? And any changes that would be made or sort of feedback and comment and input from what happened this school year?
Sean, you can answer that one.
Uh, okay, Bruce, Bruce gives me permission. Uh, yes. As, as we're, um, winding down this school year, uh, the principals will be sending out surveys to the parents and the guardians uh, regarding remote learning to get feedback, um, which will then assist us as we move into the next phase. Uh, but we also have, um, equity in learning as a whole curriculum piece is part of the task force. So we'll have, uh, people working on that and what remote learning is going to look like in the fall as part of that hybrid. Um, obviously it's, it's going to be more rigorous. And if it's a hybrid where there's some in-person and some online, um, I think, you know, the teachers will be working with the students directly. And at least they'll be in front of the teachers, um, at some aspects during the week.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any additional public comment? Okay, I, I'm going to assume that we've had our, we've had public comment. Sean, I'm going to turn this over to you, uh, to, uh, introduce Eileen and Andy about the, uh, field trips.
All right, um. Hold on one sec, I unmuted Andy and. I think Eileen, okay. I just wanted to, I know a lot of information, um, and I appreciate it from Mr. Wolf and, and Eileen for the overseas trip. Um, I know at the last meeting, uh, we wanted more information. Um, and as part of the agenda notes, I also provided, uh, information for some of the superintendents regarding, uh, overseas trips. And as part of that, um, a lot of the districts, because of the COVID and the uncertainty, uh, we're not doing, uh, trips this year. Um, so I wanted to provide you all, uh, with that information. And I think Eileen has a couple of districts that might be providing, uh, overseas trips. Um, but from talking to some of the superintendents, I think the, the unknown and, and the precedent, um, you know, of what we're dealing with, the virus, uh, led to those decisions. And I think for some of them, the fight, uh, not fight, but the controversy of trying to get refunds back, um, this year and canceling, uh, they didn't want to see their students in the same predicament where they'd be losing money if all of a sudden you had to cancel, uh, in spring. So that's kind of the, the background. But I, you know, we have Eileen and, and Mr. Wolf are also out there to probably answer any other questions.
Um, I can give you just a little more update, um, from the things that I sent out. Um, because I just finished talking with, um, EF Tours, um, earlier today. Um, so, um, we, the two trips that I'm here to talk to you about, but, you know, I guess this would be something to be considering as new trips come forward, um, to look at these things. Um, they have, um, developed a cancel for any reason, um, policy. That was one of the questions. Um, and, uh, it would be available to not only any new travelers, uh, that would either go on to like sign up for an existing trip, but any future trips that are being offered. Uh, people would, uh, if it was a new, um, traveler, they would have an opportunity to choose either the regular travel insurance, which covers for things like illness, or if the family lost their home, or if a parent lost their job, all those kinds of things. Um, the policy would be enacted and a person would get a, a full refund minus their, uh, in, their premium. Uh, they cancel for anything policy with EF. Um, it would be, uh, something where a person could not only have maybe those insurable reasons for canceling, but it's any reason. And, uh, so, uh, students who are already on a trip, that already have, uh, the travel insurance, they would be able to upgrade. That would be, um, you know, their option if they would like to do that. And that would take place sometime, uh, in the September time. Uh, that's one of the things they just haven't finalized is when they'll roll it out and offer it. And it'll be like a window, uh, about, um, eight weeks that person can make a decision to sign up. Um, they could either, uh, pay the difference, because what it would do is it would just, um, upgrade the policy that they currently have. So they could either just pay the difference in whole or add it on to the cost of the trip. And then they would have about nine months spread out to, um, pay it. The way that their policy would work is that they would have up to one day before the trip, um, that they could cancel for any reason. And it would return everything but the original $95 non-refundable deposit and the, uh, insurance premium. So the insurance premium for their cancel for anything policy is for 60. Um, so that would mean a total of $555. That's actually better than most cancel for anything policies, because like most of them tend to be about $300 in cost, but you only get 75% back of your, um, cancellation fee. So if you have a $4,000 trip, the 25% you don't get back is $1,000 uh, for a cancel for anything, uh, any reason policy. And that doesn't cover, that's still, there's still coverable things where you get a full refund, such as illness and as such that I mentioned before. So, um, what that means is that, uh, if people on that trip wanted to, they could upgrade to the cancel for anything policy. That would be about $30 a month, uh, added on to the cost of their, their trip over the, uh, nine months payments they would have when that, when that comes up. Um, also EF does have, and I said this to you, they do have a COVID peace of mind. Uh, and what that does is, uh, if, uh, up to 45 days before the trip, uh, within 110 days and 45 days. So that would be, for instance, for the Greece trip around March 1st. I forgot to look on the calendar and know the exact date. But if at any time up through to then, uh, one of three things occurs, uh, which is in that handout I gave to you, but basically if the U S banned travel because of COVID-related reasons, um, to a, to the location that we're going to, or, um, they've ordered a, uh, self-quarantine for travelers, so we would have to quarantine or something like that. Um, and, um, what's the other one here? Or they get to the restricted travel, uh, ban, um, that would restrict a part of the itinerary. Then the, um, company can either give out a 100% voucher, if people would want that. So they would get a voucher for 100% what they spent on the trip. Or they could, uh, receive a cash refund minus, uh, $500, um, uh, for, uh, expenses. So they, they have put together some things to really help. And they feel, uh, the other thing I was told is, and this is when I've been here in the industry, is that um, even by the fall, they'll even have some more things, because the, the closer you go, the more they're learning, they're able to develop, uh, better plans and such like that. But I think they've really come a long way in really providing some, uh, peace of mind for what might, we might expect for the trips. Um, and what kind of costs might, um, incur and how that would be, uh, how a family could be protected from, from, uh, losses. Um, so hopefully you had a ti- uh, chance to look through some of those papers that I sent out, uh, last week to you guys, um, that has all that information on it. And the only thing it didn't have at that time was the price. So I got that today. Um, the Australia trip is with Expedia, uh, Explorica, uh, World Strides, and they had already rolled out a cancel for energy policy. Um, it's, um, uh, the way that theirs works is that if a person already has, now, everyone going on the Greece trip already has coverage, but I made it part of the program. Um, and they can all upgrade. Uh, for the World Strides, it has a built-in insurance policy, but people could have at the time signing up buy a, um, an upgraded plan. Uh, half the people did. Um, and so the way that their cancel branching policy worked was that, um, with their insurance company, is that the people that did not upgrade at the time that they purchased, they are, are going to be able to, and they have until, I believe it's, um, sometime in March to make the decision. Um, and that would be $249, and that would be a cancel for anything policy. Um, and it's one of the ones that refunds up to 75% of, um, cancellation for any reason. So again, it has full coverage for reasons. Um, so you get your full refund for cancellation fees, um, if you say ill and you couldn't travel. Um, and if it's just for any reason, um, in other words, a non-regular covered reason, then they would receive 75% of their cancellation fees. And they could cancel to two days prior, um, to it. Um, so that is the World Stride. That's the summer trip. So I'm here to answer questions that you might have, but, but, uh, in both cases, both companies have us with a, I got a school committee guarantee when I, when I put these trips together so that we could have an opportunity if needs to to discuss it and then vote yes or no. Um, if we vote, um, no, because of the school committee guarantee, uh, the trip would be canceled and it would be a full refund. And that even includes the, um, $95 non-deposit fee that, that normally would not be refunded. Um, I do have to notify them and they, and originally I told, in the paperwork, it said that one company needed a letter from the, from the school committee, but I actually can send them an email. Um, I would suggest if we did decide to go that route, that we have an email, uh, that maybe one of you writes, and then I can, uh, forward it, uh, to them. Um, so both companies agreed to an email notification if we did decide to cancel the trips. And that email has to be to them by the 18th though, to, um, do that. Um, so, uh, again, I'm here to, uh, answer questions for you. Um, nobody knows what it's going to be like, of course, in April and in, and in August. Uh, I think today Europe opened up for, for fully for travel again. Um, so right now on the ground, um, people can fly and stay in hotels and visit museums and go out to eat in Europe, uh, or in most of Europe. Uh, so who knows though, um, you know, where we'll be at in April. I'm hoping in even a better place than we are right now.
Thank you. Do, uh, school committee members have questions? Or did, uh, if Andy is there, was there anything he wanted to add?
No, uh, Eileen's collected all the information from the two companies, but then as Sean had mentioned, just recognizing some of the financial pieces that we had to endure, uh, back in the spring with the, uh, cancellation of the Galapagos trip. And so when Eileen came here a few weeks ago, it really was just about that, uh, school committee cancellation, so that everybody would just get their money back if that's where we decided to go. But obviously the companies are trying not to lose business as well, so they're trying to be more flexible on their policies. But at the same time, with the extension, it, it does still come down to insurance that families would be buying. So definitely different than if it was just an outright cancellation, using the school committee clause.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Um, feedback from school committee?
Uh, hey, it's Brian. Um, I actually spoke to Eileen, said questions, um, but I just didn't want to wait for, I guess. Uh, and she basically explained what she did now. Uh, I think we should vote to allow to have it happen, because I'm not a big fan of canceling things in case something may happen at some point in the future. Uh, I think the parents are pretty protected for their investment, and we should just approve the trip as it has been explained.
Thank you, Brian. Other feedback from school committee members?
Ms. McToney, do you think that that's in general what the parents who are signed up for these trips would like from us?
I think for the most part, um, I did send out information to parents. Um, I have had a couple ask me, for instance, about the cancel for it, for, for any reason policy. Um, and that's really the only questions that they've really had. And I had, I mentioned last time when I was here, that about two weeks before, um, I presented at that time, that I had. That about two weeks before, um, I presented at that time that I had, had a family touch base that they had. Their daughter had lost interest in the trip to Australia. And, um, I had them put their account on hold only because, um, I wanted to know what your decision would be. Cause it makes a difference, uh, uh, when they cancel. Um, you know, they haven't paid as much in, but still. I wanted them to wait, so I had them put, put a freeze on their account. So that, but that was actually two weeks before we even met and, uh, it's really more, she was kinda like, didn't have, um. As much of an interest in the trip.
Uh, any, any other school committee members wanna weigh in? I am gonna ask the superintendent first.
I will. Um, I think that there's a reason that twenty school districts around us have canceled these international trips for next year. Um, this is a hard one. Um, I've been weighing, you know, both sides of this. Um, we live in a magnificent country. Uh, there's a lot to see in the United States. Um, I'm not sure without a vaccine. Flying that long on a plane, we know that there's, you know, a lot of issues in airplanes.
Mayor, I don't know if you can hear us, but it's certainly frozen on my phone.
Am I still frozen?
Nope.
You're not frozen on mine.
Nope, and we can hear you.
Is there anybody else that can't hear the mayor?
Nope.
And you?
So.
Mayor Bruce?
Okay. Alright, so what I was saying is that this has been a really tough one. I have weighed out, you know, both sides of this from student-parent perspective. Uh, the fact that these trips have been an important part of our educational system for many, many years. And have taken our students to wonderful places around the world. But we don't have a vaccine, it's a long time, there, you know, could be another year before we have it. Being on an airplane is, uh, risky in terms of infection. And, um, I just think there's a reason why twenty other districts around us have canceled international trips for next year. I would encourage us to do something more domestic. Uh, we have a magnificent country before us. I'm sure a lot of the students haven't been to places in the United States. It's safer, they could get home if something happened, you know, even by bus or train. Uh, as opposed to being quarantined in other countries. I'm worried about this, I'm really worried about this. Everything, I've been working closely with our Board of Health. I've been looking at, uh, recently received from our Board of Health, a new epidemiological study that says it's not a question of if. Uh, it's a question of when the next surge is gonna happen. And until we have a vaccine, I think this is highly risky. Uh, certainly if the school committee, you know, decides to vote in, in favor of this because they believe that. Um. The, um, you know, the cancellation policy provides with a, a sufficient. Um. You know, sort of safety net, if you will, for, for parents, so be it, but I, I. I think this is really risky, um, at this point in terms of, you know, we know. Students have, couldn't get home from other places, you know, quarantines happened pretty quickly. Um, and I'm, I'm just concerned, I'm very concerned, uh, about international travel right now. That's my two cents.
Bruce dropped off, I think, I think he's trying to get back in, but, um. I mean, I, I think, I think families should be, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we're, we're providing them with a lot of information as well, but I mean, I think they know the risks going in, so. Again, as long as they have an out, I don't have a problem moving forward with the trips and hoping for the best and. Um, you know, making sure the parents have all the information they have in front of them. And if they think it's a good idea, then I think they should be able to go.
I think Bruce is rejoining.
Think you're gonna unmute him, Sean?
Yep, are you there, Bruce?
I, I am, I'm not really sure what happened.
Oh, you muted again, there you go.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, it was like, uh, it was, uh, almost a religious experience, I mean, everybody froze. And then it just, everybody disappeared.
I'm back, thank you, sorry.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's up to the school committee. Um, my only concern is. If there is, if our students overseas or, you know, do get sick or, you know, I guess we don't know. What's gonna happen, uh, in eight months from now, we don't even know what's gonna happen in the fall. In the United States, in Newburyport. But, I mean, my only concern is if our students. Get ill or a staff member gets ill and they have to quarantine, you know, who knows? I, I would just worry about them being in a, in a foreign country and, and having to utilize. Um, you know, uh, the medical personnel over there and being so far away from home and.
Socialized medicine.
What's that?
All that socialized medicine across the world.
I just, I just know, um, like for, just for example, and, um, for. Students that went overseas in, in college. Um, when there was, when the first original outbreak happened, people were trying to get back to the United States because they shut down travel. And some of those American students, um, had to stay in those countries and, you know. For weeks until they could come back to the United States, so I don't, that's the only.
Keep in mind that the, uh, United States has had the worst response of anywhere else in the world, basically, so.
Correct, but I just, I just, I just.
I will say that, um, these companies did get every one of their trips back within that time and they pay for it. Also EF does have a COVID care promise and that is that if there were some reason why, um, one of our travelers. Were to be, um, become COVID positive on the trip. They would provide, um, um. You know, translation services, they'll help connect the local healthcare providers. They'll facilitate communication with the traveler's family, they'll secure comfortable location for quarantine. Uh, they'll work with local authorities as necessary, they'll book flights home at no, uh, incremental cost. And, uh, when the travel is cleared to, to fly a parent or guardian, um. Uh, they'll fly a parent or guardian, uh, to the location if necessary. Um, and they, they'll have someone from EF, uh, there, uh, for that individual. Um, if that were to, to happen and. I don't wanna see that happen on the trip, don't get me wrong, but it is, what I'm just trying to point out is that the, that, uh. This is why I like working with these companies is that they do provide tremendous, uh, service, security and safety for. For students, they do the best that they absolutely can. Um.
And what about the, what about the teachers going? I'm assuming teachers also have. Like the option to opt out towards the end, like let's say, you know, ten parents also, oh, we're, we're still gonna go. And the teacher's like, not, not going. So now you're short a chaperone, that's, that's more like the level where I would feel we would be involved.
Mm-hmm.
Because for the, as far as I'm concerned, the families, you know, like Sean and Brian said, it's, it seems like a private decision. That they're making, but with regards to the chaperones, do, do we have? Like a contingency plan if the family still wanna go, but the chaperones say, I'm not comfortable with this?
Um, what I, what I normally have done is that, um, after I have recruited the chaperones for a particular trip. And I tried to. To always have at least one chaperone, sometimes two, that have had the experience of, um. Traveling with students, especially internationally. So that there's two or three of us that have that experience, first of all. And then I usually try to also have a couple of teachers that, um, haven't had that opportunity so that they can learn from that experience. And I also try to recruit chaperones from across the curriculum and not just in my area. Um, so normally I, I collect, I'm sorry, I, I, after I've chosen that, I usually do have, uh, several people that I. Talked to about being a backup in case someone, say, got sick just before we were to travel or something like that. And it is important that the backup have, um. Their passport ready and all that kinda stuff, so I do look for that. So I do try to have a couple of people on backup that, uh, could take the place of someone.
And are we liable for that? Like if our, if we can't provide ultimately end up not being able to provide a chaperone, are we liable?
Well, that part I don't know. Um.
I just, um, as, wha- what I would recommend, um. Cause I just, uh, I sent out a, a, a text to our legal counsel. Cause that's what, that's what I was thinking, Dave, on, um. Just people overseas getting sick and although the parents agree, um, is the. You know, it's a school trip and we're responsible for the safety and well-being of everybody.
Right.
So I would, I would like.
Like.
There is.
You know, I'm just thinking like, like if you look out downtown, there's certainly clearly a lot of people who don't believe that masks are important anymore. But a lot of people do. Uh, my son's gonna go to summer camp. In a couple of weeks up in Maine and we were told that some of the staff isn't gonna come back, but enough of them will come back. So I'm thinking like along those levels, it's gonna be a personal decision how comfortable people are with being public. And so I just wanna know, you know, the safety thing sounds like EF has it taken care of, but I wanna know like if we can't find a chaperone. What happens?
I could double-check that, I could double-check that for you in the morning. Uh, we, we are covered under an umbrella liability, liability insurance policy through EF. Um, and it's, I think around, uh, forty million dollars or something like that.
That should cover it.
But I can check just to make sure about the, uh, uh, chaperones, just to make sure that's part of the liability coverage. Not being a lawyer, I didn't think about that.
I mean, this, this surely has come up before, right? I mean, even a trip to somewhere in South America, not during a pandemic, is gonna be considered pretty dangerous.
Yes.
Though this type of thing's not come up with legal in however many years we've been doing these international trips?
I, I, I think because of the pandemic. I think it, it, it's a whole nother, it's a whole nother, um. Aspect to this, so it's not, you assume risk on, you know what I mean? I just think the un, the, uh, unprecedented times of a pandemic. On travel, um, it's something that, you know, we might wanna just get. Uh, just some legal advice around, just to double-check.
Okay, um, I, I still, I wanna recommend, we have to vote on this, uh, presumably because you, uh, Ms. McConney has to have it there by, what, in three days? Whether or not we're doing this?
Yep, on the eighteenth.
Yep.
Can we just not vote on it and then if legal for some whatever reason comes and says, hey, we're never gonna be covered? I mean, then what, when, when are we gonna hear from legal, before the eighteenth? Before, no, certainly not before we can vote, right?
I would try to have her expedite a, um, an opinion by tomorrow.
Well, then can we, somebody wanna make a motion properly if we vote and it's dependent on whatever legal says? Should we do that?
Yeah, I do want the trip to be able to go forward, I don't wanna hang this up. Even, I gotta be honest, my question, I know it, it sort of put a, a crimp in things, I didn't mean to hold it up, like I was just being curious.
No, it's a good question.
Um, Aileen, I had a question, um, can you, on a, a percentage basis, and I, I know that you just need to ballpark because a lot of this stuff is just coming up now. Um, what percentage of the families going on the Greek trip and what percentage of the kids that are going on the Australian trip? Um, have or intend or at least are indicating an intention to get the cancel for any reason insurance? Is it fifty percent, is it seventy-five, is it?
I don't, I don't think I could give you, I've had like, uh, three parents ask me about it. Yeah, I wrote to them that, that this was all going, happening and stuff. Um, and I also wrote to them about, you know, presenting it to the school committee, I talked to the, and I put down all the materials. But, um. I would say only three of them responded out of curiosity about, about getting cancellation insurance. That doesn't mean that, many of them don't wanna get it, but you know, how people are, they don't always, um. Let you know what they're thinking.
Okay. Sean, do you think you would be able to get us an answer by tomorrow?
Sean's not there.
Sean, Sean disappeared on us?
Yep.
He may have taken a call.
That coward.
Be the attorney.
Can I, um, can I just pose like a what-if question? Hey, doesn't mind? So, the last time we had, um, Ms. McConney come over, my question was, hey. Mask regulations say, you know, now I'm supposed to fundraise before you say yes. And that's fine, you know, it's, it's one of those things that just has been missed or whatever over the years. So say we had approved this back six months ago, which would have been the ideal way to do it. And then all the stuff went down, would we still be having this conversation? If the kids were gonna be allowed to go or would it just be between EF and the parents and the organizers?
We could have come back and presented, realizing that because of the situation we're in with the pandemic. The school com- committee could have revoted. Cause it's a clause within their whole thing that if the, um, school committee votes down the trip, then everybody gets their full money back.
Right, but if the school committee had approved it back in September, then it would have been approved. Um, now that said, EF does have a, um. COVID, uh, peace of mind that if a trip doesn't have the school committee guarantee. Um. Then they would have had an opportunity to, um. Cancel the trip, this is for a twenty-twenty-two trip now, actually. So if a trip like is started for twenty-twenty-two, like usually you start those in September. Um, and they don't have a school committee guarantee, uh, which I always try to get. Um, then they'll have until February fifteenth that they could decide, no, we don't wanna go, do it. Uh, we're worried about COVID and they could, um, get their money back. Because we have the school committee guarantee, we got to go, we, we are going out till June. To, so we have an extended time, so in other words, if I was offering a trip in, in September for twenty-twenty-two. We would have till June, the key there would be is that if we're gonna, now that we know that procedure. Is I would present you a proposal of an, of an idea of a trip before I actually signed up with EF. Um, so that we can still have the school committee guarantee to go out to the end of the year. Um, is how I would do that. Cause once you have approved a trip and we're with EF, then that's, that's it, the trip's been approved.
Um, you know, that's an interesting question, Brian, and, you know, my. The concern that I would raise is that circumstances on the ground shift dramatically. Um, would it not be irresponsible not to revisit? Uh, you know, if there's, who knows? Chernobyl kind of thing happens or, or, you know, it's a trip to Italy and Vesuvius is making lots of noises. You know, wouldn't we want to revisit whether or not it makes sense, even if we had approved it?
Um, uh, Bruce, Aileen told me a story the other day, Aileen, there was like a trip going somewhere and there was some sort of natural disaster occurring and they. Re-routed it, right, like midway?
Yep.
Like they were already in the air, right?
Yes. Um, that was just to demonstrate that one of the things that, that, uh, EF will do is that if there's something that happens in an area. Um, so say Chernobyl happens and we were gonna be going to, uh, Russia. Um, and now we can't, uh, they would offer us an opportunity to, uh, postpone. Or to go to a new location, um, or get a voucher, um. But, because no longer can we travel to those, to that particular place. Um, and a voucher can be turned in, in for, uh, reimbursement, um, as well. Um, so the one example he was giving is that people were, they were on their way to, um, Japan. Um, they were, had flown the first part of the trip to like Minneapolis, I think, or Detroit. And when they got there, they found out about the tsunami. And, um, so, uh, right there on the spot, EF said, what do you wanna do? And they. And they came up with an idea that they wanted to go to Paris. Um, and got that approved and literally while they were at the airport. And so they went to Paris and did their, uh, educational tour in France instead of Japan.
What did they do it all there? What did they all do with their like Japanese language books?
Hopefully they were, they were using this for their language book. And they could then just use a different app.
Sean, has this, Sean, has this come up at all with your superintendent calls with other districts? I know the mayor referenced some districts. You know, not doing these trips, but.
Yeah, we have about twenty, um, twenty districts that are not doing the overseas trips. Because, I mean, we still haven't even, uh, gotten guidelines around our own field trips. Like day trips are, uh, within, you know, within our. Uh, state is not gonna happen at this time.
Right, and those are twenty districts for trips for next year for the twenty twenty-one class, right?
Yeah, this is going into the next school year.
Yeah.
So it's, um. Yeah, and I put that as part of the minute. So I just, I reached out to Attorney Lyons and, um, she'll give us an opinion, but. She's very concerned because it's not, it's a. It's, it's a pandemic. It's unprecedented times. So I think. I can get a legal opinion and send it out to school committee, um, regarding that. But I just think there's, there's so much unknown. And on the impact, you know what I mean? And I would just, I know there's insurance. I don't think they get the full money back, but I know. You know, EF, it took, um, a lot of. It took a lot of dishes to fight with EF to even get vouchers, um, considering with, with the pandemic. So I'd hate to see kids and parents thinking, you know, they're gonna be going away and all of a sudden. They're not, and I, and I still worry. You know, about the kids getting sick. You know? Cause they, they may not be a vaccine or, or, or any of that stuff. So I, I think for a lot of the districts, this, there's so much unknown. That they were uncomfortable on approving a trip now and not knowing what it's gonna look like down, down the road.
I fear with that, Sean, is that you, we could end up saying that for the rest of our lives, you know, I mean. We know the situation we're in now. It could all be pretty good. So if we vote on, yes, she can do it, then it's really, it's the parents who are taking the risk. Well, like, like anything else, you know, we, we say like the parents who don't want their kids to come to school on a snow day. Well, then don't send your kid to school if you're nervous about them traveling to the building. It's still up to the parents. I mean, and if, if school committee is here to simply vote on, yeah, we can do a trip. And then with the knowledge for any reason, I mean, who knows? Volcano, whatever the situation is, a trip can be canceled. Well, then you, you know, cross that bridge when you come to it. I don't, I don't wanna stop this whole process. Just because something might happen a year from now.
I wanna, maybe I'll just add one thing. There's, um, there are no seniors on the Australia trip. Um, there's about eight seniors on the, uh, Greece trip. So the only thing I'm thinking is, is that if, if in turn, if it, if you did vote no. There is still time and an opportunity for. Another year to help those kids, um, that, uh, to go on a trip. Uh, many of the kids that have signed up right now are sophomores. Uh, that's the vast majority of the kids on the trips. So they still have two years that they could choose to go on a trip. Um, I'm, I mean, I, I love to see these trips run. Um, I'm just putting out there some information that. There, there's only eight students who, who would not have an opportunity. If everything's great in the, in the spring, in, in April. Um, those eight seniors would miss out that they didn't get to go on a, on a trip. Uh, there might be some alternative that could be done at that time. But the vast majority of the kids on the trip are, are kids who still have time to go on a trip. For instance, we could offer this trip a year out or, um, or a different one. And see where that goes.
I, you know, again, I, I have been thinking about this and I'm pretty, pretty torn about it. It isn't, you know, if this was Chernobyl, if this was a tsunami, it's not, it's a pandemic. It isn't just the parents who are making a choice about putting their kids at risk. The issue being it's a pandemic, there's no vaccine. These kids could come back and fourteen days later. We could have a surge here in town. So it isn't, they're, they're, they aren't just making a decision based on what's gonna happen with their own kids. If it was, if it was some sort of natural disaster thing, I, I would be less concerned. But this is, this is, you know, and I, I. I spent six hours in a Johns Hopkins course about covert, uh, about tracing, uh, contact tracing. And this stuff, you know, you've got, you've got some. Timeframes here that, that put other people at risk, whether you want to put them at risk or not. Because it's a pandemic. So I, you know, that's a concern of mine.
I, I hear you, Bruce, but I think if that's the case, we need to lock down the boardwalk again and lock down the skate park again. Cause I could tell you, I was downtown with a mask on yesterday and over at the school with a mask on today. And I was one of like a tiny handful of people. So I'm not really worried about the ten people going to Europe next year. Well, I mean, I not say I'm not worried about them, but. I think that's the least of our worries with regards to tracing virus sources. It's a. People are not taking this all that seriously anymore.
So that means it's not, so, so that doesn't mean it's not something that shouldn't be taken seriously.
I, I'm just saying like we're voting on something that's gonna hap- happen next spring. And I, and I think we have, we have huge issues right here now. So like, I, I don't know how to take that. And you know, we're talking about in the fall coming to school too. So I, I just think it, it's a tough thing for us to gauge where our barometer is set. But, you know, kids show up at, at school, if we get a, if we're gonna open up school in September and kids show up without masks on. Which they're going to do. We're not allowed to suspend kids for stuff like that anymore unless the legislator's gonna change those rules. So we're gonna have to find a way to sort of either stomach this or not. This to me of anything sounds like a, a small private thing that they're going off with. Uh, maybe I'm wrong in that. I don't know. I don't know.
I think this is not, this is a school sponsored event. If something goes down, it's gonna be the responsibility of the school. Why did twenty districts around us cancel international trips? It's because of the unknown. It's because we don't have a vaccine. Because we know that airplanes are not the safest place to be at this time. And it's not, I, I just don't understand why we don't have to say it's all or none. Why can't we do a domestic trip this year? I mean, I have an order out that no staff is allowed to leave the state. For conferences or work-related business, yet we're gonna take a group of students and we're gonna send them to another part of the world.
In a year.
I wouldn't send them to Florida right now.
But you'd send them to Australia.
Maybe next year.
New Zealand, sure.
Now, New Zealand now, now, we were talking about a trip to New Zealand. I'd feel much better. Maybe we can get EF to change it right now.
Done very well.
Yeah, New Zealand's got it back together.
Right, the covid rates in the Galapagos were probably pretty low as well. It's getting there, right?
Things are changing in that part of the world.
No, David, you had to change planes in Quito, which was, which is one of the hottest spots before Brazil in, in South America. And I know, cause I, cause I did change planes in Quito for the Galapagos. Yeah. I would also, I would also point out that we have, uh, an even number of voting members here tonight. So the potential is that there could be a deadlock vote. Uh, which would, which would, you know. Is that correct, the Mayor Holiday? If we, if we split three-three?
True, it's not a yes vote. You're right. So I guess why don't we just do a roll call vote? Let's see where we are.
Let's have the motion then. Or do you wanna do a straw vote?
I move to allow the trip to go to, go forward as scheduled next year.
The second. Is there further discussion? Ms. Kennedy, can we get a roll call vote? Is she there?
There.
Good to hear you, Ms. Kennedy.
Okay. Mr. Hawke is though.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Reden is not here.
Mr. Reden's here.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Reden?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Holiday?
No.
And Mr. Menon?
No.
Order two.
Motion passes. Uh, you can probably cancel that call to Cat Lyons.
I'm still curious to hear.
Yeah, I am as well.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good information to have for everybody.
I, I do.
I think finally we can't hear you.
How we would vote like on any number of things though? I don't know how much we wanna rely on. That, I mean, if it's, if it's not legal, it's not legal and that's one thing, but. Something like this, an opinion of something like that, I don't know. Am I making myself, anybody else, I'm trying to articulate here that we, we wait for a lawyer to tell us how to vote. I don't, I don't know about that.
No, we're waiting.
Although we're gonna hear our opinions regarding this.
Yeah, Brian, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for.
I know, I know.
From the lawyer as to what the legal ramifications are of taking the vote. Ultimately, we take the vote. But if you get an assessment of legal ramifications that are pretty serious and you take the vote anyway, open yourself up to significant liability.
Right, exactly. I mean, I think that, um, for many, a lot of things we may do then. That, that conversation should happen well before anything comes up, you know what I mean?
Yep, I agree, but again, this is a totally unique situation. And certainly all the years I've been on the school committee and I would say, it's fair to say in the last hundred years. We're dealing with a, we're dealing with a pandemic. Um, we're dealing with, you know, not enough testing out there. We're dealing with rolling surges. We don't know if we're done with the first or the second phase. Um, some states are a disaster now. Massachusetts happens to actually be getting it back together. We don't know when there's gonna be a vaccine. Those are all the variables that are very real that we unfortunately, I think, have to take into account now. I wish we didn't. It's very complicated. But it's.
Sorry.
It, it's just, that's what it is.
I, I think knowing that we have a number of trips that are regularly planned, that I guess I'm thinking most easily about DC next year. That we should maybe talk in August before people spend a lot of time. Planning those types of trips. If we are going to allow it, cause that DC planning and paying starts in the fall. Right? And so if DC's not any better than, you know, New York or Florida or California or anything like that. We should maybe talk about that in August.
And that trip is one of the ones where you don't get all your money back.
Right, and I think.
And that's, that's during the school day. It's a school, but like we're much more, I think we're much more, uh, involved. In a trip like that than we are in EF trip over a school vacation.
I think that's pretty reasonable to add to the agenda for August.
For August, yep.
All right, next item on the agenda is the mask resolution. We, uh, we got a template and then we got one that was sort of filled in with our information. The Mass Association of School Committees is encouraging school districts to approve this. Um, I, I would add actually one more piece to this. We can certainly discuss it. It came up at, at the education meeting today with city council. And several of the city council members were, were interested in and, and questioned whether or not. If the school committee were to approve this resolution, whether it could also go to the city council or individual city councillors could. Sign on to the resolution as well. That was the first thing. The second thing was a suggestion was made, uh, to add something to this that I actually think makes a lot of sense. Um, and it's, it, uh, is, um. Was a, a statement, making sure that, um, A, the state is gonna provide reopening guidelines to us. And that we ask the state to provide them thirty days, forty-five days before school reopens. Just to make sure that they are also on deadline, so that we, we get what we need to do to work with. Um, so I open up, uh, conversation. In the school committee and then I will propose an amendment to, to this if we decide to go forward with it.
I would just like to say that I think this is a wonderful resolution. I think we have seen unfortunately. Over the last several months of this pandemic and the impact on our school district that. You know, the, trying to get direct guidance, timely information from DESE has been really challenging. You know, when you give guidance, uh, what, ten days before your traditional graduations at high school, they finally come out with something. You know, just trying to get them to make decisions about closure, remote learning, you know, it, it, you know, authenticated learning. I mean, it's been really, really challenging to get concrete information out of. See, and it's been very, very frustrating, I know, for the administration, for parents, for students, for all of us. So I think this makes a lot of sense and I'm hoping that every school district across the Commonwealth does, uh, sign these resolutions. And that, you know, our organization does push DSC to come out with something. I mean, I know it's hard because we don't have concrete information, but at least tell us. You need to come up with three plans. You need all-in, hybrid or remote. It may just, and give us some links or some guidelines. Use Marilyn's plan as a basis to start. You know, this, you know, never knowing where we're going, what's going on. I mean, I think we're very fortunate that we have such a strong. Superintendent and assistant superintendent, principals and leadership team that have, you know, been able to carry us through. Um, in a very, you know, professional way, considering they had like two weeks to figure it out. Um, I would like us to have a lot, I mean, now's the time to give them direction to plan for the fall. Especially if we have to do any kind of remote hybrid learning. And so I fully support this, uh, and I think the timeline is really critical. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Other feedback?
I, I do like it. Um, I didn't even know about it until it was in the packet. Um, do we know historically, does something like this? Between the schools and the state actually work? Um, like I, I would never say to not do this. I think it's a great idea, but by us saying, hey, you can't have any unfunded mandates. Do we think that they would actually say, well, these guys really mean it and it's signed a thing? You know what I mean? Does, has this have, has anything type of funding happened that we deemed? Or any other district, if everybody has reference, that something needed to be done so badly? That a petition made the state kinda like check themselves and say, hey, you know what? You guys are right.
If I could just add one piece to that, um, Brian, that there is, you know, um, state law that says that they aren't supposed to issue unfunded mandates. And that's why we have, you know, Suzanne Bump as our auditor, who does evaluate new laws, regulations in terms of them being unfunded. Now, this is an unusual time we're in, but I, I do believe that, you know, there has been CARES money. There has been funding that's supposed to be there, but you know, if we've gotta double our buses, we've gotta, you know, don't change. Schedules of teachers or any of those things, that's all involves finances. And so we, we clearly, you know, need to take a, a, a stance on this and again, work with. All of the advocacy agencies, Mass Municipal Association, the school superintendents, the teachers. You know, anyone we possibly can to push this forward.
Yeah, I mean, Brian, I, I, I would say that it's, it's hard to say whether it makes a difference or not. Um, you, you're certainly letting them know what the concerns are and. Uh, you know, it's, you're better off than not. you know, it's you're better off than not letting them know. Is it going to make a difference? I don't know. We can spend three minutes on this, going through it, approve it, we'll get it typed up, we'll send it over to the City Council if they want to add something to it. And then maybe it'll have an impact, maybe it won't, but you know, it's it's in a sense, it's a representative democracy, and we're a school committee that represents a very significant portion of the city's budget. And I think that we need to act in a very affirmative way to protect the city's budget as well as our own. If we're going to get slapped with unfunded mandates as a result of this pandemic, I think we need to let the, you know, let the let the state know that we don't think it's a great idea.
So I'm a little torn. You know, as a as a member of this school committee, I understand this looks great, and I think this would be good for Newburyport. But I think across the state, you know, two things come to mind. Number one is equity. Right? If District A needs an extra $200,000 to open, and District B needs an extra $6 million to open, is District A going to be okay ponying up that money? Like, are we going to further skew Chapter 70 and whatever other resources they can dig into to fund this, because small districts, you know, in the west of the state or wealthy districts outside of Boston could probably swing this for not so much money, whereas bigger urban districts, Worcester, Lawrence, Lowell, Boston, this is going to be a nightmare to try to fund. And so and so I'm just curious, it doesn't say anything about the level of equity, and I would also wonder if school districts would be willing to say, like, it's it's an all or none thing, like, we all want it, but you know, if we each get a chunk of it and District B still has no chance of of following through, are we all still on board? That's my one concern. The other thing is, you know, if we send the state an ultimatum, the governor and the commissioner could be like, you know what? You guys are totally right. Schools close next year because we can't afford it. You guys want everything? You guys want everything funded? Okay. Everything can't be funded, so we're not going to open schools. You know, we can say the same thing about special education, you know, we want no unfunded mandates. Perfect, no unfunded mandate, special education's gone. Like, it's it's a it's a kind of a slippery slope. Sending a, I mean, this isn't an ultimatum because school committees have no real teeth on this. It's just like a public opinion poll with with a couple, you know, formal signatures on it. But we do have to be careful. No, we don't even have to be careful. We just have to realize that there are, the flip side of this doesn't look great. Right? Because we all know that they're not going to be able to fund everything that all districts need.
But can I just respond to that, Dave? What is the, how is that different than the inequity with the Chapter 70 formula that was established in 1993?
Well, because we've 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 accepted putting up with it, that's why.
Well, no, we haven't. We've written letters, we've petitioned, we've let, you know, advocated with our legislatures over the years. It just took forever to change it. But I don't see any difference in that, and I think that us, you know, stepping up and saying that, you know, these, you know, if there are extraordinary costs that there can be unfunded mandates, and, you know, I think they have put money out there so far, but there has to be more if, in fact, we end up, you know, in a situation where we're, you know, short millions of dollars to be able to open our schools because of the model that they set up, and I think that's, you know, part of the conversation, that the sooner we get information from D E S E, the sooner we can figure it out.
I'm I'm a huge fan of that. That's actually my favorite piece of it, Bruce, is that what you brought up, that the timing piece to if we had to add that, I, you know. Sean, can I ask you a question about that while I'm on there? Like, since sports start earlier, and the sports are technically under the control of the the Principals Association, right?
Yep, the MIA.
But the the commissioner would still decide whether or not there's a season. Yes, that's
That's part, that's part of the fall.
So so I I guess I I guess I'm just thinking like forty-five days, Bruce, that you brought up, which I personally think is a good amount of time to make sure that teachers are ready to have class and to plan an online or remote curriculum or hybrid curriculum. Forty-five days for a sports season is like two weeks from now.
It's up, it would end up being about mid-July, so it would be about a month.
Right, so
But yeah, yeah, it is a month.
Right, so it's just, that's all. I'm just, I just wanted to bring up, I mean, I'll vote for it because I always think it's good to raise your hand and speak your voice. But I I am really curious just about what some of the districts would say when they realize that, you know, is this an ultimatum? Are you really on board for people? Are you going to be an ally to those districts that really need, you know, ten times the amount of money you're talking about? Because they're already struggling and, you know, the population is just harder hit?
Yeah, I, you know, I I hear I hear what you're saying. The the you you raised the question about Newburyport and some of the more affluent districts. For all of us, the more affluent districts and Newburyport and a couple of other districts like us, a- as as the superintendent said earlier, our Chapter 70, we're we're able to sort of get by because we don't get, you know, we're screwed by the formula. So yeah. I I mean, I think that I I don't think, I don't think the state will take this as an ultimatum from us. I think the state will say, okay, we we get it. You don't want an unfunded mandate. Whether that's going to change their behavior or not, I don't know. But I think we have an obligation to the community to say, we just don't, it's not acceptable to do things that way.
And the most important thing is that we've got to get the information in a timely manner. That's, that is, I think, the critical point here, is that we cannot wait, you know, two weeks before school opens to say, oh, we have to make changes. I mean, there is a chance that, God forbid, something, you know, could happen and everything changes. But I think at this point, we need to have a plan, and we need that for the guidance from D E S E.
I I I would, again, I would propose that that we make a motion to adopt the language as it's typed in here, and I would make the following amendment. And I I will offer it, and then we can discuss it. I would add a a the first two whereas, then I would add a whereas statement. Whereas the state will be providing reopening guidelines to districts. We request request receipt of them no later than forty-five days prior to the reopening of schools for the 2021 school year, comma, and, and then go to the whereas the state cannot expect mandatory. That would be the change that I would offer. And that would that would lock in that forty-five days.
Is that a motion, Bruce?
Yeah, I'll make that as a motion.
All right, second.
Discussion about whether to add that to the document. All in favor of adding that to the document?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, I need a motion to approve the document as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will ask that, Sean, that you have Joanne retype this document with the additional, and I can give her the language tomorrow morning. The additional whereas. We send it in, and then let's send it over to, I think, Counselor Zead was interested in carrying it to the City Council. So we'll get a copy over to him with our approval.
Absolutely.
Terrific. All right, I'll 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 get Joanne the language tomorrow morning.
Okay, great.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is I did update. Continuation of the appropriation of world language teachers at NOK. I have a possible vote on that. We've asked the mayor to give us an update, and I don't know if Sean or even if Nancy is still there to give us an update.
What I can tell you at this point is the City Council did approve the continuing appropriation budget that we did include through the summer. Actually, it went in for September, the two world language teachers, so that as we go forward in preparation of a full-year budget, I think it does make sense that I think it's important that we have the school committee vote to su- support the world language. It's unfortunate that, you know, that study and presentation to the school committee was a little bit behind the budget process, but I think it clearly shows that that three-year process going forward in terms of enhancing world language is something that has been a real high priority for school committee, for the community, for the council. And I would encourage us to take that vote tonight. We still don't have good guidance from the state. There's been a little shift, obviously, in terms of working on some of new bills and legislation regarding police. And I know that they are not going to, the governor is not going to submit another budget. So the House Ways and Means is trying to trying to figure out how they go forward at this point. We won't have a good sense of the real significant, the real numbers in terms of decrease in revenue for this last quarter until the end of July. But I know the council is really pushing us to, you know, get, give to them a budget by mid-August. We certainly would, you know, our goal is to do that. And, you know, we'll begin going forward, but, you know, do not have any additional direction or support from the state level at this point. So but we certainly have put a, I think, a solid budget together that will continue our operations through the summer months.
Terrific. Sean, you or Nancy, if she's still there, want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think when we were talking, the only impact on the three-month budget would be September because it would be adding staffing, so that would be the increase you would see in September. Nancy, you there?
Yep, I'm still here.
All right. So and then as we went back, you know, Principal Furlong and her team are going to start to implement the language teachers on the team, and we're still in the beginning process of what that scheduling is going to look like, but she did outline, you know, different aspects of the of what foreign language would look like at the middle school. But I think it's a start in the right, you know, right direction of eventually getting back the world language throughout the district, which, you know, obviously, before I got here, but in the, I think, the around 2010 and eight and nine in that area, Newburyport was highlighted for the work and the the language and the culture throughout the district.
Great, so Mayor Holliday, you're you're hoping, Nancy, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to that?
No, we've added the two foreign language teachers to the budget, and we've added the additional revenue to the appropriations. I've verified the amount with Ethan. So it actually comes out to, instead of a 3.5 appropriation, it comes out to a 4.25.
Mayor Holliday, you're asking for us to take a vote on this?
Yes. Motion to approve the two world language Spanish teachers for, to be hired for the academic calendar in 2020, 21.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm I'm excited that we're talking about bringing the language opportunity forward, and we're adding programs to the schools. I am, I'm still nervous about the context of it. We've been talking about this for a long time. We've been talking about the schedule shifts at the middle school for a long time. We've been talking about use of flex time at the middle school for a long time. And there are a lot of uncertainties. I think, and from the answers we got to the questions, still seem to be a lot of uncertainties about the context of everything. And I I just wish it was it was worked out a little bit more clearly. Because you know, because the the context of discussion we've been having for years is about how is time used? What are we doing with the flex time? What is everybody doing during the flex time? And all those things have not been addressed. So, you know, with 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 faith and hope, I'm I'm ready to help us move forward on this, but but at some point, we really need to have that discussion clearly and transparently.
Yeah, yeah, the discussion i- is is ongoing at the middle school now.
I I know that, Bruce, but it's been going on for years, and and nothing's, and nothing has changed about this.
The so The plan put forward by the by the school and by the district does propose some changes in how things are done.
I get that, Bruce. I read it.
Any other comments from school committee members? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the second reading of the school committee calendar. The, I guess the caveat is that the intention is to identify which of the business meetings will become forum meetings and what the subjects of those forums will be. That discussion is going to happen at our retreat at the end of July. But so that's why it doesn't, it's not reflected here. But this is a second reading. Do we have a motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar for 2021 with the understanding that we would make some modifications at the retreat? So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
I have one point on we don't have an inauguration in January. It's an organizational meeting, and so that always was to be determined in terms of what the format was for that joint swearing in of committee and city councillors, but that happened this year, but it would just be and the first part would be organizational, then there would be a business meeting or a forum or whatever, but I just take out inauguration. That's the only change.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense. Given the year. Yeah, I think that makes sense. That's just, that's an editorial change.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. We have our calendar for next year with some modifications coming. Sean, I'm going to pass this over to Angela for her report.
All right, Bruce.
This is kind of like the Huntley-Brinkley report.
I I think you, I think you were skipping to the two superintendents, and you forgot about Angela.
No, no, I said I'm I'm have, I'm giving it to you to turn over to Angela. I was just trying to keep you awake, Sean.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Angela Bix Report, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to talk briefly about some of the professional development we have planned for the summer and our plan for summer curriculum work, because you know, there are so many preparations to get ready for the fall, as we've been talking about tonight. So I've put together a template to teacher, for teachers to work from to build the first three days of a hybrid curriculum and instruction plan for the fall. And because we don't know yet what the fall is going to hold, you know, we've been advised by D E S E to plan for a hybrid, that it could be any continuum of service from all the way in school to all the way out of school, but most likely it will be a combination of the two. And so we've developed a template for teachers to work from. I will be including some money in the Esser grant to help fund this summer work that's going to happen. But we've consulted with Billy Donegan, who was supposed to come back at the end of June, if you remember, to do some more work around skills-based teaching and learning. And what we've decided is that Billy's going to work with some of our teacher leaders to support this curriculum development work that's going to happen over the summer. And the template I've designed is in line with the work that we've done through skills-based teen learning. We also have technology workshops running all summer long that will allow the teachers to further develop the remote aspect of these plans. So Catherine Page, our integration specialist at the Brezner Hand. So Catherine Page, our integration specialist at the Brezner Hand, is running. Do you want, do you need to start my video, Sean? I'm getting this message. It, it was frozen. It won't start, so I'm sorry.
She had the screen, Angela, is that what it is?
No, I don't need to share the screen. I just was receiving a message saying the host was asking me to share my video. And my video is frozen. So, anyway, excuse that interruption. And so that we'll be, we're providing, Catherine Page is providing four different sections of her technology boot camp, which is all about building remote learning plans for the fall. And Jacqueline Russo is offering two six-week courses. One, that is a repeat of Google Slides that she offered this spring when we went into remote learning and we had a lot of teachers participate. She's offering that again as well as part two, take it further. And then Lisa Alexander is offering a course in edulastic, which is a way to build online assessments. And so we've got a lot of nice supports built in that would all work to, towards supporting the teachers in the building of this hybrid plan. Would at least get us started for the year and have everybody feel very well prepared. And I'm happy to take any questions you have around that.
I, Angela, this is Bruce. Do, how, how does, how does some of this work going to integrate with the, the reopening planning that is being done that's gonna also engage community members?
I don't know that, well, you know, I think this work where we, when we talk about offering equitable instructional opportunities, I think this work will integrate with that. I think, you know, we heard from a parent tonight who was hoping that the community might have some input about what remote learning looks like and what that feels like. I think this could interact, you know, intersect with that, that way. But really, this is, this is about planning curriculum and instructional practices to, you know, in a full hybrid model because the advice we've gotten from the commissioner is that, you know, we'll be, we'll be back to full rigor in the fall, whether we're in school or out of school. So we really have to put into full gear our, our skills-based teaching and learning practices to allow us to do that really well.
Great, thank you.
Angela, if there's new, if there are new platforms that are gonna be coming home to parents, is there a way to get a, like a primer posted on, on our, our website or something like that so parents know? I mean, I, I think there are a lot of parents out there who might say, I finally got used to Google Classroom. And whatever. And so if you're gonna add like edulastic and, and, you know, whether it's Flipgrid or Seesaw or whatever, a, a lot of the new things that people are starting to use, can, is there any way to, like if the teams are, have some sort of slide deck on how to and what is this? Is there any way we could share those with the public?
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, David. I definitely think that's possible.
We don't have to do it in August, but like if, if it turns out in September, these are the things gonna be using.
No, I think that's excellent.
Sure, people would love, would love to see that.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angela. Brian, did you have something you want to say?
No.
No.
Sean, you're on.
All right. Superintendent's report, I just, we have, this week, I wanted to go through some of the events that we have going on, so we actually had a little retirement parade for Tracy Hawk today with the staff and her students drove by in front of the school. That was really nice. For Ms. Hawk. We have the Fireman Citizenship Award Delivery on Wednesday morning. Myself, Principal Furlong and Chief O'Clair will be delivering those awards to the students. And I get to like Kramer, I think I can ride in the back of the ladder truck. I'm looking forward to that. The old Seinfeld reference for us out there. The Brez, they're doing goodbye farewell Zooms for each grade on Wednesday, June 17th. Third grade yearbooks will be distributed Thursday morning, June 18th from 9:00 to 9:30. And then the senior parade went so well, we had this idea for the district on the staff goodbye wave for the end of the year. So the idea is that's gonna start at 10:00. We sent out a connected, I'll do a video connected tomorrow to the families. Both the staff, faculty support staff will line the streets. And then we'll have the students and the families drive by and we can give them a little goodbye wave for them to enjoy their summer to bring out some closure. And once again, the police are gonna be assisting with that. You know, with the, the little parade route as the, the students and their families drive by each school. So we're looking forward to that. And then after that, the eighth grade yearbooks will be distributed right after the parade from 10:45 to 11:30. And then Pam Keely, the last day for us for the food distribution. And then our neighbor's table will pick up for the rest of the summer, but a big shout out to Pam Keely, her staff. We bumped that up to 12, the 2:00 PM and we sent that out to families because of the parade. So the whole idea from the senior parade and how we ended that, passing out to the Polmas on such a positive note. We could bring this to the entire district. So we're gonna encourage, you know, the, the students and families, feel free decorate your cars and, and a lot of Clipper pride on the 18th. So I think that that's, that's really a positive piece to end the school year. I have, what else we have? The remote learning participation throughout. So just, so we know we've been as, I think after the second week when we went into phase two, we started to track the participation rates throughout. So the high school regular participation was at 90%. We had 8%, which was approximately about 60 students who didn't participate fully. But they only were focused on certain classes, so we had to make some accommodations for those students. Instead of having all eight classes, they focused on the classes that we made the accommodations for. And we had 2% that did not engage, but through the work of our counselors, working with families throughout. So there was various reasons for that. So as we're looking at summer school and trying to look at what student engagement would look like, in-person engagement, we have a list of students at the high school that we'd like to continue to work with throughout the summer. For the NOK, similar, we're about 90%, 50% completed, actually, I'm sorry, 9% of all their content level assignments, 100% of contact for all students throughout the remote learning. And similar to the high school, there was a handful of students that, that had little to no engagement. But once again, we were in contact with them and their families throughout and there was various reasons for that lack of participation. And reaching out to those families, they would be obviously strong candidates for the in-person summer school assistance. The Mullen, grade four was 96 average and grade five was 90, 91%. And very similar, what we're seeing is we're able to identify the students who could not fully engage in our adjustment counselors and principals have been in touch with those families throughout. And then overall participation at the Brez, as you know, the, the pre-K, you're not gonna be doing an hour Zoom for the, the three-year-olds. But they were 57% on a regular basis checking in. In kindergarten was 65%. Grade one was at 80% and higher and grade two, 91%, grade three, 94%. So as you see, the, I think the older the students got was more participation. But there was a lot of learning opportunities with our parents, especially at pre-K to grade one, that the parents are participating on a regular basis for their, their children. So those are our participation rates. As we said earlier, we're gonna be sending out a survey on the remote learning, get information per school, per grade, which will be helpful as we move into the summer, but also with the task force to set up some of those focus groups to bring back information to the task force. Commissioner O'Reilly, as, as we stated a little bit earlier, he was really adamant about the guidance and guidelines that went out that the news media picked up a week ago. And some superintendent started to develop plans around that guidance. That was for summer school only and it was just at that time. He's gonna be sending out a draft of fall guidelines, hopefully by the end of the week. That's what we were told. And then final guidelines will be coming out mid-July. And the reason why he's delaying, the reason why with the mid-July release is they wanna look at the public health data to make sure that their final plans for the fall coincide with the data. But two general themes that he talked about is having a hybrid and having the flexibility to go from in-person engagement with students to also a remote learning and vice versa. Things go well. And as I said earlier, and the virus seems to be under control, we can bring the students back. If there is another flare-up or we need to send students home or then we have that ability also. The work that we're doing this summer is really taking and working with Billy to really in the teachers to develop remote learning plans that gonna be, I think, a lot more rigorous in the sense because you can also have the in-person. With a hybrid, you'll have in-person instruction along with a follow-up with the remote learning. So the students will be checking in, I think, in-person, which I think will assist them with providing clarity on, on the different assignments. I think that's all I have for right now and plus you've received the two weeks of the Friday memos. But as I said, once we close school on the 18th, then we're gonna start, as I said, putting together the task force, reaching out to different stakeholders and then start to develop the focus groups. And then the more information that we have moving forward, we'll provide ongoing communication. The remote learning website that we provided will probably put a, a link there to all the task force work that we'll be doing. So I think, you know, we'll see. I mean, we're, we're all in it together, not only Newburyport, but even all the superintendents throughout the state. And really, the unknown is, you know, it's, it's tough to plan for, but we definitely, I, I think, have some concepts that we need to begin to plan for and put forward. So.
Thank you.
Have, has the state put out anything about restricting captains' practices that often take place throughout the summer, as long as they fit within local communities like COVID guidelines?
Yeah, so the, there's a couple of things. That's a great question. And going back to your point on sports, there was questions around that at the last meeting. And they don't know what the fall sports are gonna look like. I mean, I, I could imagine contact sports. You know, probably maybe impacted more than like golf, for example, where you can have the social distancing. But we're supposed to be getting guidelines around sports in the fall. I know for the camps that are going on right now, that's part of the phase two. So there's strict guidelines on camps that are happening in the sense like you have 10 students per one coach and one group. But they, you know, all of those guidelines, Kathy Ricchio and Nancy Lysick, along with Kyle, took the the CDC guidelines, the state guidelines, and then developed a checklist for private organizations that typically come in and utilize our fields that they have to sign off on to follow all of those guidelines. But as far as the MIAA and athletics, there hasn't, hasn't really been anything released at this time for that.
But I'm sure Kyle, if something comes in July, Kyle will push things out to the community.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hey Sean, that survey you mentioned?
Yes.
Is that gonna be coming out through your office?
Well, we have a similar survey with, I think, at the different levels. But I, we want, I want those to go out to the, from the principal. So each, you know, I mean, each grade and they're familiar with the principal and, and the different circumstances and then we'll be able to share it. Obviously, the district can see all the survey data too.
Can you ensure that the, whatever the services you guys are abusing does not allow repeat submissions? I know with the later start times, initial survey, there were a whole bunch of repeat things and it just, you can't have the same person, you know, anonymously saying one thing and skewing the results. I know that using Survey Monkey, which is a popular thing is, it's easier to not have that restriction turned on.
Right. You can do the same for using Google Forms, though. You can do the restriction of once someone completes it, then the email is registered and then one.
If you're, if you're into the Google Forms, then also if you can make sure that the participant doesn't need to have a Google account.
And the only multiple pieces we'll open is any positive things towards the superintendent, so.
Exactly.
That will let my mom vote at least 50 or 60 times. She still likes me right now.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Subcommittee reports. The Education Committee met today. Sean, do you want, Sean Reardon, do you want me to just talk about that briefly?
Sure.
Okay. We, we gave them a July, August, September budgetary update. And I guess the city has voted to waive fees for the use of fields and, and parks this summer. Nancy explained that we hadn't planned on waiving fees simply because the use of those fields usually involve us needing to have staff on, maintenance staff, custodial staff. And those fees actually pay the custodial staff. So that was one thing that came up. The superintendent talked about where we were with remote landing, plant learning, summer plans and expenses. And we were able to, I think, really clarify the whole debacle about fall start plans and that, in fact, the guidance had been summer guidance. And Sean then spoke about the, the overall plan for our closure task forces and how we're gonna be moving, moving forward on that. And I think that, that was about it. Sean Gallagher, was there anything I missed?
I, I think that was it. Mr. Redden, was there anything else?
Well, I wasn't there, so it wouldn't be appropriate.
Oh, geez.
I know you were, I didn't know, I don't, I didn't know if you actually made it in at the end there, but.
I thought I saw him at the end.
All right. Finance is meeting tomorrow morning, I believe.
Yes, 8:30.
Dave, Policy Committee?
Yeah, Policy met this past week. We had a good meeting. We talked about a number of things, including starting to nail down some possible plans for fundraising policies, nothing definitive, just brainstorming. Got a, got a lot closer. And then we did talk about special meeting. Changed the special meeting. changed the special meeting policy language in our book, which I think you guys all got. Um, so I don't know if I need to read that to everybody, or if you want me to share a screen, we can have it up.
We, Dave, we could do that, um, the other thing that I was thinking was that um, if that, if that policy is sort of nailed down, then we can do a first reading at the retreat as well. Or work on it there, or, or suspend a second reading on it or whatever. So however you wanna do it, it's fine.
I guess it depends, I mean, everyone, I don't know if everyone's gotten a chance to read it.
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay, it went out on either Thursday or Friday, I forget which one.
Probably you, Dave?
Was it part of, was it?
Was it from you, Dave?
It came out from Joanne.
Yeah, I think it was part of the packet, wasn't it?
No.
No, but it came out along with uh.
Right, right, it came out the next day, that's right.
Additional meeting materials.
Okay, well, if the mayor hasn't seen it, we'll hold off and do a first reading at the uh, at the retreat.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, and superintendent evaluation has not met yet. Any other business before us, after us, in the middle of us? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
移到
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Good night, see you.
Take care, everybody.
Good night, everybody.